Now we move on to item 34, report on the status of adopting a global plan for the probation departments, halls, and camps. We're going to have item 35 as well as item 34 together. Guillermo Bierroza, she'll be Chief Probation Officer Sheila Williams, Chief Deputy Administrative Services, and Kimberly Epps, Chief Deputy Juvenile and Adult Service Probation, will make a presentation. Dr. Christina Galley, Director of Department of Health Services, and Dr. Barbara Ferrer, Director of Public Health, Michael Oh, Director of Internal Services Department, David Carroll, Director of Youth Development, Lisa Garrett, Director of Personnel, Dr. Deborah Derardo, Superintendent of Schools of the Los Angeles County Office of Education, and Connie Draxler, Senior Deputy Director of Departmental Health, will be available for questions. Welcome Guillermo.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to address probation's plan moving forward with respect to our juvenile camps and facilities. This isn't a report on the entirety of the probation department, but much more specific to our facilities, juvenile halls, camps, and our plan to best utilize those moving forward. I'd like to begin by pointing out, in preparation for this report, there are a few underlying values that really were the guideposts for determining how to best utilize our facilities. One of them is a public acknowledgement that smaller communities are important in being able to provide services for the young people that are within our care. It's something that we've struggled with, and this plan moves forward in the direction of just making very public that we cannot provide the best services that our young people need if we don't make some modifications to how we use our existing facilities to really provide a small community environment for the young people we have, whether it's SYTF, whether it's camp. It's a principle that we're going to pursue in all of our facilities. And much of the presentation really surrounds on what changes we have to make to achieve that goal. The second is that we want to invest in more appropriately doing the initial assessment to determine the needs of the young people that we have. Being able to do a thorough holistic assessment of young folks when they are received really informs what happens with them for the remainder of the time they're with us. An appropriate assessment, an in-depth assessment, and having a facility and a location where we're doing that with our partners is important because it's going to inform what we tell the courts is available for our young people. I believe it's going to reduce the amount of time that many of them are with us if we from the onset provide a location and invest with our partners in taking the time to do those thorough assessments and then decide and inform the court on where the young people need to go.
What's your question? It's right here. Oh, you want it, oh, do you hand out? Do we have a hand?
It's on our monitor.
Yeah, it's on the monitor. It's not on yours?
I don't have it.
Can someone get, because I've got it on mine. Yeah, we'll have someone come in. Yeah.
The third is acknowledging that we've had some difficulty in recruiting sufficient staff for the population that we have. We believe that by maximizing the way that we use our few facilities and locations, it'll actually help us address the staffing shortages. Did you want, did you want me to wait or we? We're okay.
We're all, thank you Guillermo.
So just to recap, where some of the values are. One, smaller communities lend themselves to providing better services and healing spaces for our young people. Secondly, that front-loading assessments and understanding the individual young person's needs has to become a priority moving forward. And third, and an acknowledgement that we have been in a staffing crisis, that actually consolidating some of our locations will, in part, not totally, but in part, help us address staffing shortages. And all of that without expanding the footprint that probation currently has. It's simply moving or modifying how we're using our existing locations. So the, so the proposal is to consolidate the types of services by location. It's evident to me that in order to provide a healing and appropriate environment for the girls and young ladies that we have within our system, that we would best be suited by selecting one single location in which they could receive gender-specific, trauma-informed services at one location rather than having separated between a juvenile hall, a camp, and other locations.
Which slide do you want? Because someone keeps going back and forth with the slides.
That's me.
Which slide?
Six.
Okay. Sorry Guillermo, but it was going back and forth, different slides.
Yeah, I can imagine that's confusing.
Go back a slide, I think.
So we could work with this. So the identification for the best-suited location for that would be Campus Kilpatrick. When we take a look at the population of girls that we have had, and you, we don't tend to exceed 50 between the multiple locations that we have. Did we resolve the technical difficulties?
I am. He's not going in the order of the slides. That's why I'm moving so quick. I'm sorry. I'm trying to follow his presentation. He's not following the slides.
There was another way to say that Sheila, but we, uh...
But you got the point.
Yeah, yeah. All right, let me follow my own slides.
Do you want me to go? Are you going to go back?
No, I'll go.
Okay, that's the first one.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to go back to the next, the next appropriate slide.
Okay, restart. What I really wanted to talk to you about was Central Juvenile Hall. While Central Juvenile Hall is no longer being utilized as a juvenile hall, many of you are aware that the full facility closure means that we have to continue to move the day services that are there. And so first up is really finalizing the healthcare services that are being provided there and moving them to Los Padreinos. That's where we have the majority of the population. We think this can be done in relatively short order, and it's just a matter of being able to move over, well, it could be somewhat complicated, but for example pharmacy services so that they are fully onsite at Los Padreinos. That's the first move, and then we would have no footprint at Central Juvenile Hall past that. I want to make clear is I don't want to confuse anyone, although I'm referencing Central Juvenile Hall, that is not an approved juvenile hall, nor are young people there today overnight. That's simply a staging location for them to either go to medical services or to be provided some limited diagnostic treatment there. So that would be first up in terms of timeframe, and we hope that either by the end of March or beginning of April that could be finalized. That is dependent on, we're working with our county partners, but even some things are, are out of their control. For example, some licensing requirements and to move, so that they're actively working with us. They know the planned dates, but we have to be somewhat flexible. Next slide is the consolidation of what are commonly referred to as the East Camps. Those are the three camps that we have. By closing camp page for a host of reasons, one of them is there's deferred maintenance and additional costs if we wanted to remain there. The other is that we have two camps in close proximity that could absorb that population so we wouldn't have a reduction in the total number of beds. We would simply move those to the other two camps. We want to continue to provide the courts with the same number of beds available in the event that they deem one of the youth suitable for camp. After, in order to maintain the, the target here is that you would have 50 in each of the other two camps. That, that's roughly the number that you would get if you absorb the 30 or so young people that you have there. I failed to mention at the beginning that a part of this is also about establishing, I didn't go into it in detail, but when I said establishing small communities, that means that it's not only for the young people, that you have sort of this predictable number after which you're unable to provide excellent services, but also for staff, and also all the way up the chain to make sure that you don't have, for example, management or one superintendent that's in charge of 300 young people and all the staff that goes with it, and another one that only has 20 or 25. So part of it is standardizing for both those that are receiving services, but also for our employees and for management.
Can I ask a question on that? Is that what the state envisioned when they wanted us to put like home-like settings for the SYTF? Is that what they envisioned?
This incorporates precisely that.
Yeah, okay.
You're really unable to do that, and you're unable to manage such an environment if it's, if it's too large.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Again, because this isn't building something, it's simply taking one location, stopping intake to that location, and then increasing not the capacity, because the other two camps already have the capacity, we just internally don't put young people there. That also could be done in relatively short order. If we begin stopping intake to page at the beginning of April, we believe that by the beginning of June, that should be complete. That'll give us additional advantages with having only two camps. We could also start working with our partners in determining if each one of these camps is going to have a different identity, a different purpose. One could envision that one camp would, for example, focus on credit completion for those that need to finish high school, while another camp could absorb young people that have already graduated, and really we should be looking at either vocational or academic preparation for higher education or college classes. It becomes very difficult to provide a variety of services, especially when you're low staff, if you have multiple programs that you need to provide for the same young people. So it's really advantageous in terms of consolidating the staff that we have, but also gives us an opportunity to reimagine what the purpose of that community is and what it could provide that population specifically. In all likelihood, the most difficult part of the decisions that we're making in probation really surround our SYTF step-down at Kilpatrick. It is a program that really receives a lot of positive feedback from both those that are there and the folks that work there. And we want to make sure that the SYTF population has an opportunity through pro-social behavior and their own decision-making to have a step-down. However, we have limited locations, and I believe that we can better utilize that facility. In order to do that, we need to create space for those young SYTF population at Nidorf to see that they have options in front of them beyond simply the restrictive environment that they have when they first go to the facility. We can do that without Kilpatrick by doing a few things. One, I'd like to remind folks that there are still opportunities for them to go to Boys Republic and a couple other vendors that we have, and, and they do that, and they earn that through positive behavior. There's still Pine Grove, which is the fire camp that is available to them at relatively low cost of the county and is run by the state. But I don't think that's enough. If you've been to Nidorf, you know that that is a very large property that we can better utilize so that even if you're at SYTF at Nidorf, that you have options through behavior to essentially step down at the very location and least restrictive and have different opportunities while you're there. So the plan is to really reimagine Kilpatrick so that a young person that is there has agency over their own future by their behavior, and they're able to move through the system while at Nidorf. So for example, to move from a more restrictive environment into one where we have pods available to them to really look more like a transition between being in custody to the life that they're going to have when they're outside and they have their own apartment. And there's a lot of those soft skills that need to be built that we could be doing there.
Can I ask a question? Can you describe how you're going to reconstruct Berry J. Nordoff to fit these, the College Academy and the interim step-down? I mean, how, how quickly and when is that going to start? And do you have a timeline for that?
Yeah, so, and maybe I should have started the beginning. The timeframes that you see here allow us time to go back with our partners and community at large and folks that are interested in, we want to hear from them. You know, we certainly have our vision on how to do that. So for example, I can tell you, there are at least two things that I would be a proponent of exploring at Nidorf. One of them is similar to the tiny homes concept, where onsite you could start living in something that looks much more like independent living. And another one is, like you said, in conjunction with the California Guard, they have some very good programs throughout the state that we could replicate there. I don't want to make commitments on any of those because that would mean that we have thought this out fully without taking feedback from both our partners and the network that supports our young people. I intentionally want to leave enough flexibility here that really, as much as possible, this is a community project in which now the hard work is to meet with folks, take in their input, and then make some determinations on perhaps what is best on there. But essentially, the way it would look is, we have so much free space there that we could dedicate one or two separate areas that through positive behavior, the young person could go into that community. And whether the community is cottages, or tiny homes, or whatever it is after we receive feedback, that could all be done onsite.
And describe the College Academy, is that, is that classrooms only? Is that what that is? Just a location on the campus where there will be just exclusively academic, whatever it is, training or whatever that might be?
The way I imagine it, it's a full program where they reside there as well.
They reside there, so that's also living quarters.
Yes.
So, okay, and when you say tiny homes, I'm, you know, I'm not a big fan of tiny homes. I just have to say that. I believe in pods, similar to what Kilpatrick has now, and, you know, that are smaller. And I'm wondering if you've given any thought, I mean, is that, is that in cement, so to speak, that you're saying tiny homes is it? I mean, or how would that be? Would there be two people, four people in a tiny home? Or how do you envision that?
Yeah, and no, it's not in cement. As a matter of fact, you know, this is a relatively long process where we have to go back and gauge, architectural firms do that entire piece. I simply use that as shorthand, and it's probably the wrong term. It's just that prefab or container homes tend to be easier. I don't want to give you a project that's going to be 12 years from now.
No, I, I understand.
Right? And there are ways to get there, and I probably should have said prefabricated instead.
Prefab, okay. And that, that I've seen. Okay.
The idea is to give them greater independence on their own living and have a designated area where that smaller group of kids could do that, still being engaged by staff, but really that's mirroring what their life would be closer to once they're released.
To real life, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
In order to do that, we would stop moving young people to Kilpatrick in the second half of this year. So the idea is not to have to move young people that are already, but through closing intake, eventually have an empty Kilpatrick that could then be dedicated to our female population.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, when do you expect them to, the girls to actually make that transition? You're going to be vacant August 1st, but when, uh...
Go ahead and answer that, and then...
Yeah, then we'll go together. Sorry.
Go ahead. No, no, go.
Right, so the idea would be that by August of this year, we would have a vacant Kilpatrick campus, at which time we would leave some space to make any modifications that would need to be made there to make it more suitable for the variety of services and folks that would go there. And the idea would be to make Campus Kilpatrick the care or the client assessment readiness and engagement center for all of the young girls that we have which in our system. You know, we really can't give you more details, there's a number of steps that would have to take place even after it's vacant to do that. For example, we'd have to re-engage the Board of State Committee Corrections to re-designate that facility. We would have to make sure through work with our county partners between now and then that all of the services we're anticipating have gone into effect. We have to make sure that medical services are appropriate, take place up there. There are all sorts of community concerns that we would have to address. For example, visitation, it's a further location. Would we use community providers to make sure that family could get to them to visitation? Would we take that on? It's, it's a whole host of considerations that we want to be, we want to be a good partner and give enough time to work, work all of that out.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. And then that would free up the space at Dorothy Kirby to really utilize that as a complex care and special needs facility. We know that we have an increasing percentage of the young people that we have, the young boys that we have at Los Padreinos, that really require different type of attention. And really Dorothy Kirby was created for those purposes. They do many things correctly, but, but we think that we're missing a good chunk of the population. This would give us an opportunity to maximize that space because we know we have more need than what we're servicing now, and then really consolidate the classifications and the preparation of folks that we have there to be able to do that. Again, I think you'll see a theme here, which is really level-setting the size of these communities so that they're manageable, but we're still have the maximum number of beds or space needed for what we have in our population. So none of this anticipates reduced capacity. We're going to continue to work to make sure that the young people within our system is as low as possible, as, as we can do responsibly. But part of this plan does not reduce capacity because, you know, part of that is out of our control, and I think it would be foolish for us to, to reduce capacity at this time despite those additional efforts. And then finally, after all of that, then it would provide us an opportunity for the, really the largest component of this proposal, which is, we know significant changes need to take place at Los Padreinos. It is large. Folks have done their best, but, but what we need to do moving forward is essentially separate it into two facilities. One of them really focusing on assessment and when folks come into the system intake essentially. We know there's a significant number of the young people that we have who are only with us for 23 days. What you do and the services that you provide someone where they're with you for 23 days should be significantly different than those that are with us for, let's say, a year. And, and we should organize ourselves in that fashion so that we're able to more appropriately do the upfront assessment, make the recommendations for that they should go, try to get them out of the system as quickly as possible. And then in fairness to the young men and boys that are with us for longer term, there are different types of services that we need to provide them. If you, if they're with us for a year, it's more than simply providing them the basic education. We need to, you know, we're taking the place of their family for the week. There's all sorts of additional services that we need to envision and have them engaged in. The, the type of, for example, mental health services that might be crisis-oriented for someone that's just coming into the system is significantly different than maybe some of the trauma work that you want to have on a regular basis with those that are with you for longer. And really, you're working on the transition of, of when they leave. We know they're going to leave us. Are we preparing them to be most successful when they leave? That really requires us to think of Los Padreinos as really two separate programs with two different populations that we're, we're serving. That, in terms of timeframe, that's the, the longer component. And that'll be sort of dependent on, on the assessments that are made on how long that would take. And then in terms of adequately preparing our employees, our staff members, to really contend with the challenges that they have, you know, probation doesn't have an appropriate academy. And this plan proposes to use the two vacant Camp Scudder and Scott to have a permanent training center in which we could both do an initial academy for the anticipated increase in hires, and really do that professional, ongoing, continuing education. We, we don't have that currently, so we use contractors, we use a temporary lease space that we have. And it really informs employees how you feel about them when you don't even invest in having a permanent academy. When folks can't see a place that's their academy, you know, we could say, I value you as an employee, and, and then they find out, we don't, we don't even have a place to train you? So did you really mean it? Additionally, you know, part of our culture moving forward is training and preparation and meeting the demands of the folks who we're providing services for, professionalizing. None of that's possible without having a professional training academy. So we're not seeking to expand portfolio, simply utilize what we already have for this purpose. So before we move on to staffing, I'll just stop there, I'm sure you have a number of questions.
Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Guillermo. It's really hard to kind of really look at this global plan for our facilities in a way, for me anyway, that's not clouded by our current situation. I mean, when Supervisor Horvath and I originally wrote the motion asking for probation to tell us their global facilities plan, that was in 2023, we'd not been found unsuitable at Central and Berry J., and Los Padreinos was closed. So a lot has changed since then. We had to shut down Central because it was found unsuitable. We reopened Los Padreinos, and we moved all the predisposition youth to Los Padreinos. But I feel like we're still, you know, in a battle for our suitability and stability within our current system. And I'm, I'm interested in your vision, but I'm wondering if it's the right time for it to be really serious about a global plan of facilities, construction, renovation, moving huge numbers of populations around when we're struggling with, with staffing issues. And I feel like this, a lot of what you're proposing would, would cause a lot of disruption to our, the young people in our care. We're still waiting, I guess, to hear from BSCC. They spent a week, last week, at, at Los Padreinos, and I don't think we've gotten their final report, have we? They seemed to indicate at their public meeting that we were making some improvements in staffing, but we still don't have their final determination. So I just was going to ask a couple of questions about this. So you're proposing to end the current SYTF program at Kilpatrick, and instead, you're, you're suggesting that we use that for all of our suggesting that we use that for all of our girls. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's a huge change. I mean, moving all the girls to Kilpatrick would mean moving the predisposition girls as well. And it's my understanding that facilities that house predisposition have to be approved by BSCC. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so how, moving forward, you'd have to do that first, right? You'd have to get their approval. How much of this plan have they seen or weighed in on?
They have not. It would have been improper to present to them without, to the board first. By the way, I appreciate your comments with respect to, we're in the middle of a crisis, and here we are with a shiny new plan that involves a lot of moving parts. You know, what I'd say is that we've really deferred doing this now for multiple years because of the crisis. And what I have heard in response is that many of the oversight agencies that we engage with, they want to know, that's fine, you're addressing immediate things, but compliance and the health of a system requires for us to do both things. There are things in our compliance that require us to do this for long-term health. So I think we've arrived at the moment in which if we don't act, we can't really resolve the problem because there are short-term fixes and things that depend on us being able to realign long-term to provide services in programming, for example. So I was of the same mind that let's address the emergency issues and then we'll get to it, but so much time has now passed that for us to have credibility.
Right, but so much has, as I said, so much has changed since we first wrote this motion asking for a global plan. And I'm thinking about having the predisposition population at Kilpatrick who need to frequently be transported to court. Kilpatrick is a little bit further away from court, and with the staffing shortage that we already have, is that, are you foreseeing that as being a challenge?
There are many challenges that have been taken into consideration. One of the reasons is the girl population is much smaller. And when you take into consideration, to give you an example, I think one of the concerns folks will have is if you have intake all the way at Kilpatrick, won't this be an impediment to the system? But then if you actually, from an operational standpoint, take a look at the widgets, intake is maybe one every four or five days. So what seems to be insurmountable is actually less of a hindrance than the alternative, which is we continue to provide services that are maybe not excellent at the locations where we are because we have very confused missions and mixed populations. And so there is no perfect utilization of our facilities because I'm trying to work within what we already have. If I were to come to you and say, I want to design a system from the ground up, it wouldn't look this way. But instead, from what's possible and what we have.
Right, I hear you. We're just, I'm just, we're just thinking of some challenges that might ensue based on your proposals. I'm also thinking about the staff, you know, that are working either at Dorothy Kirby in Commerce or Los Padreinos in Downey, and that's a long way from Malibu. And I'm wondering, and it's also Laco and some of the departments who are sitting behind you who are your partners as well, wondering, you know, what you think the challenges might be with that staffing, with teachers, with those that are used to commuting to Downey and Commerce. Is that a challenge that you think is overcomable?
I think it is a challenge, and I'm sure the department's heads could speak for the challenge that that will pose. To be clear, I've not stated at this juncture forcibly reassigning or moving any of the folks to any additional locations that are from probation. As a matter of fact, Kilpatrick is one of the locations where we typically have an excess of employees that want to work, in which because the population is capped so low.
I thought we had a hard time at once staffing Kilpatrick. That was part of the problem, why we didn't have more young people there, was there was a staffing issue.
That is not the current situation. I have more staff that want to work at Kilpatrick than I have need for.
Okay, because I remember that that was a challenge in the beginning. So, yeah, right. And just about Los Padreinos, your global plan, creating two separate communities and a lot of construction and renovation. I'm wondering, again, considering our current crisis, how, do you think, you know, you're going to have to move staff, right? While you, what's your plan to, are you constructing and renovating maybe one half of it, and then all the young people go to another half while you're doing that? It's really hard for me to understand. I've been out there a lot lately, and the thought of doing major construction and renovation and creating, you know, what your goal is, I have a hard time seeing how that would actually work, particularly without disrupting the young people who are there right now.
It's going to be a challenge moving forward either way. So whether this global plan is adopted or whether it would be changed into two communities, Los Padreinos can't continue as is major renovation is required because of a whole host of things. Heating that needs to be upgraded, as was stated before, home-like setting renovations. So whether the smaller community component is adopted or not, that is going to be a challenge for us. And the ideal situation, or what we're planning, is to do exactly what you've mentioned, which is to rotate for small periods while there is construction onsite. But I just want to make clear that chaos isn't going to be created because of this plan. That is a challenge that we have that's currently in existence.
I mean, when I visit out there, I don't see the chaos. I see more, again, where we have failed with providing programming and where we have failed in, you know, really providing activities for those young people. We talked to a lot of girls last week who have been sentenced to Dorothy Kirby and have been waiting 10 months to get moved. So I feel like I really, I'm going to have a hard time wanting to pour energy into a global facilities plan when I know there are so many things we should be doing right now to improve the existence and life and dignity of the young people who are in our care right now. And I have a whole list that I would rather focus on than a facilities change, moving, because I've never thought it was a facilities problem, right? I've never thought it was a facilities problem. I think it's staffing. I think it's recruiting the right kind of staff. I think it's really leaning into, even if they're there for 23 days or 10 months, there's been someone in Los Padreinos for seven years, right? That's what I want to lean into. I feel like we have an obligation to those who are in our care now to really find a way that when they eventually go somewhere else, when they're eventually released back home in the community, they have, they're better than when they came to us. And I feel like we're missing that opportunity, and so I'm going to have a hard time leaning into, you know, some giant facility reorg. I mean, I'm anxious to hear my colleagues, but I feel really strongly that we're kind of failing the young people right now who are in our system, and there's so much more we can do. And I look at this great partners that you have, you know, our youth development, our health, our Laco, you know, our public health. We have so many of your partners that I know, I want to see us all kind of lean in now and see what we can do because I don't think there's money currently for this global plan. When I look at construction and renovation, I just don't see where we're going to come up with the money for a plan like this. I think it's a pretty big ticket. I appreciate your vision. I don't want to step all over your vision, but I know that I'm just struggling with currently how I think we're failing our young people.
I just, if I could make clear a couple of points, this isn't a big money ask. As a matter of fact, one of the reasons why you have some of these challenging decisions, tough decisions that have to be made, is because this is an attempt to work within what we have. When we talk about the money that has to go to the big components that are not the movement between camps, that's not where the money is. It's money that already has to be spent because of home-like, money that has to be spent. So that's independent of this. That price tag and those construction projects will take place with or without this. As I heard you be very specific about the vision that you have for the young people, that's what I'm trying to execute. But what I'm saying is that there are some impediments. For example, as you described, what the young girls that we have in our care deserve, I'm not going to be able to get there with them in the location that we have. I'm not going to be able to get there with having.
Well, I mean, I hear you, and I'll yield my time after this, but I don't know how quickly this plan will be approved or supported by this board, so we'd better figure out how to serve the young women in our care now where they are. We have to. This is a lofty plan and maybe someday, but in the meantime, they are in our care. We are their families, and I think we need to do a better job. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I agree, but I don't know that we've got a lot of options. I think that therein lies the problem. You know, I think this has been brewing long before Guillermo came on board, and we just have kicked the can in terms of what we should be doing. That's why I asked if Nidorf is going to be what they envisioned at the state when they wanted us to take the SYTF and make it more home-like setting, something that this board talked about, we didn't act on. And I think that that's part of the problem, is that we're really years behind. Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, for a point of clarification with County Council, this plan that's being presented today, does probation, does the probation department require a board motion for this to move forward? I think it's noticed to us as a receive and file, but I know the board previously gave authority over one of the facilities to the probation chief. So I just want to understand today, is this plan being presented to us as what is going to happen or an idea of what could happen that will then, at a future point in time, be voted on by this board?
Thank you, Supervisor, for the question. It is a receive and file. There's no action that this board is taking today. My understanding from probation is that they're presenting this in order to get feedback from your board, is my understanding. And based on that feedback, that they may go back, reassess, look at their plan. I don't want to speak for the chief, but this is a receive and file, so there's no action that this board is taking to affirmatively direct him to do anything.
That's helpful, I think, because not a lot of detail was shared in advance when this item was posted to the agenda. My office has heard a lot of concern about that, and so I just want to make sure I understand today what we are, what we're doing is having a discussion about what might be. And I do want to thank the department for finally sharing the global plan. I know this is something I've been asking for, though I am deeply disappointed that at this point in time, this is the best global plan that the department is able to submit. I strongly believe we need a global plan, but I'm not ready to support what's presented to us today, in some ways because it's exactly what I feared when we took the vote in December when the board decided to give probation more authority over Los Padreinos, and I voted no at that time. In this global plan, the board was looking for a long-term plan that would break down silos between departments, modernize operations across services provided by multiple departments in a care-first framework. Instead, we, what I understand is before us today is something that was developed by probation alone. I don't know that it was informed by our other departments, but we'll get there. Not responding to inquiries from our board office, I don't know, maybe you, maybe my colleagues informed it, but my office certainly didn't have that opportunity. I know the community hasn't informed it because they've reached out to my office and said they didn't even know that this, the details of this plan before today. It doesn't appear that the department has considered, let alone planned for, obvious concerns that significantly impact what a successful plan ought to look like. Outreach to labor partners, outreach to service providers. Have we checked in with the courts? Did they actually, because they're the ones who dictate where our youth in custody are housed. How can we, as a board, publicly commit to significant changes to probation facilities when we don't even know if we will have health, mental health, or programming staff to support those changes? How can we, as a board, commit to a plan developed by a department that continues to blatantly disregard the board's explicit directions? Ultimately, it is our young people who are losing out, and I am very concerned about One thing I would expect a global plan to address is the number of youth in our, entrusted to us and approximately the number of youth assigned to each facility. Can you give me a sense of what that number might be and in which category, you know, what their status is, whether they're a step-down SYTF? Can you, do you have a sense of that for each location?
Our current population are proposed, so each one of these is broken down in small communities with a cap at 50. So it just happens to be that when you look at our current population, or if you go back a year, a year and a half, it's relatively stable with some of the special needs groups. So this would envision a Nidorf program with a cap at around 100. That includes both the onsite step-down and the regular programs. Kilpatrick, same thing, not exceeding 50 there with the combination of the different type of youth that we would have there. A Dorothy Kirby with a cap at around 50 as well, each of the camps at 50. And then Los Padreinos with 100 for the assessment component and another 100 for those that are there longer term. So sort of 500.
So I'll get to the specific facilities then. With regard to Kilpatrick, I didn't hear in your description a plan to move gender-expansive youth to Kilpatrick. Is that your plan as well?
Yes.
Okay, and so I think it's important that we explicitly call out how we're supporting gender-expansive youth for their safety, given the attacks that these young people are facing at all levels of government. Right now, I think it's important that we prioritize their unique needs. How is probation building in the logistics of operating a predisposition facility at Kilpatrick, given that there are different populations that will need to be served there?
I want to make sure I understood your question. You said, how are we preparing to receive a predisposition youth at Kilpatrick?
Yes. Intake, transportation to and from court, increase in medical and mental health appointments, increase in staff and service providers onsite.
So precisely to your point that you mentioned earlier, this is, and I believe it's my duty to set out the goal of where we want to be, and now with our partners, see, the reason that this isn't filled in with more specificity, it's to allow the space to, with our partners, we've already had one meeting with the other county directors specifically responsible for this treatment, to make sure that this is a joint plan on operationally how we get there. In addition to that, too much cannot be prescriptive because, as I mentioned before, we still would have to go to BSCC to do the pre-inspection of the facility and go through that entire process. It wouldn't be anything different than what we currently do for that population at a different location with respect to the rules and regs. It would be exactly what you mentioned, which is if we need to prepare to do an intake medical assessment for one young person, an average every to four or five days, you know, county partners to say whether they can do that or what they would need to do that. That's the work that would take place from now until those dates that were presented in the plan.
So it's my understanding the plan before us is something that the probation department developed and that there was a meeting with other departments afterwards, and that this plan before us has not been informed by other departments. Is that right?
That's not how I would describe it, but this certainly is the probation presentation on what to do with probation facilities, yes.
So was there a meeting with the other departments? Were they informed this plan then? I mean, I can ask them, or?
This is a probation proposal, which has been presented to them with the understanding that how to operationalize requires their input and our flexibility in making changes where appropriate. In addition to that, there are other stakeholders that are going to have to take part in this. For example, the service. For example, the service provider is going to be an extraordinarily important component here. I may envision one type of service and one modality, and then we find out that in LA County, the providers have a better idea on how to do that. For example, I have an idea on visitation, on how to help families and make sure that they can get there by providing transportation. After we have conversations with a network of providers, they may come back and say, "You know, what we really need is more video visitation." So all of those pieces are yet to be worked out. This is first the presentation before you as the Board of Supervisors.
I guess I would have preferred that a global plan be informed by all of our departments since they're, you're all going to be responsible for how it operates. I'm curious to know how pregnant youth will be housed under your current proposed plan.
That's probably one of the more difficult components in terms of, that's already a topic of discussion with respect to Kilpatrick, even though it's a very small population. There's really no good, you know, the ideal situation is that LA County finds itself in a situation, especially when we have young folks in our custody, then third trimester, we're able to find less restrictive housing for them. Being in custody period when you're pregnant is difficulty. And so expanding things like electronic monitoring, making sure that we have a very small number of those, the ones that the court finds is absolutely necessary, is the best place. But we have to be prepared in the event that we have someone at Kilpatrick and how those services are going to be provided. And of course, our medical health professionals will take lead on the best options for that.
And have you made any efforts to engage the surrounding communities to describe any change in population, change in use of the facilities?
No.
Okay. And with regard to Berry J., I know the population has significantly increased in the last couple of months. We heard positive reports when the population was at 65. It's now regularly at around 96 people. This plan makes major changes to Berry J. that were proposed elsewhere previously, such as moving the last stage of SYTF step-down from Kilpatrick to Berry J. And it creates a new military-style academy that we were led to believe was also being considered elsewhere. So can you explain why is combining these different concepts in one location, which has a difficult history of its own, the best path forward?
With respect to the anticipated maximum capacity of the population, it takes into account the increase that we've already had. It requires for us to continue to explore and enter into contrast with not simply having Nidorf as the sole opportunity where we can put SYTF, but in continuing to utilize and increase the amount of space that we have where we can appropriately move those young folks out. So we know that with respect to, for example, Pine Grove and some of our vendors like Boys Republic, there's still more capacity there. And it's really incumbent upon us to make sure that some of these young people are ready to go there so that more of them can be sent there and informing the court that that's the most appropriate place. So it's not simply moving young people from one location to another. It's making sure that there is a variety of appropriate places for them to go, not just one. In terms of the, and even though we're in its infancy in the academic program with the National Guard, that has a very good track record in terms of outcomes a year and two years out after they leave. That's what we're after, is the preparation for them to continue the education afterward. These are anticipated options for a very small component of that SYTF population. We want to give young people options that best suit them. This isn't about forcing young people into programs that they don't want, but providing them options so that they can have some agency. It's not boot camp, by the way, so that is not something that we are interested in or going after. But it is being supported by other entities and agencies that have a good track record. And if you go visit them, they deal with the same young people that we have here go there. And it boosts our ability to provide services we currently aren't. You're correct that it was originally anticipated at a partnership in one of the camps. However, it became evident relatively early on that the program requirements, and it succeeds with longer period. And so the amount of stay in the populations that we have at the camp are there for a shorter period. And really, the better suited population is the SYTF, in which we're trying to look for longer-term programs because we have predictability in them being able to finish the entire program, let's say, six months, instead of having, so you can have a cohort instead of folks constantly going in and out. That would be one of sort of the failure points.
And you had said earlier that you hadn't engaged communities around Kilpatrick. I assume that also applies to Berry J.?
That's correct.
Okay. So for me, I would like to see a global plan that's informed by all of our departments that considers what are best options for programming, mental health supports, education, all of the relevant departments who are represented behind you. I would prefer their input to be part of a global plan before it come to this board for consideration. That's why we have these departments. And I think a global plan has to include the input of all of the departments who have to work together. I know that you convened a summit of all of the departments to work together, and it's my hope that that's leading to ongoing integrated effort in terms of how we're supporting our young people. But for me, this is, this is premature. But I hear you saying that this is what you wanted to present to us, to give us a sense of what your thinking is. So that's, I guess that's where I'm at today. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, in listening to Supervisor Horvath and some of the comments made by Supervisor Hahn, it just, it's striking me that we have got to get to a place of clear alignment. In that a motion was passed, drafted and passed, had asked for a plan. I seem to recall it being rather prescriptive, much like what you just detailed in your closing comments. We have so much work to do. We are dealing with real lives. I don't know what it's going to take for the board and all the departments to get closer in alignment, is the best word I can come up with, in terms of understanding our expectations and getting a, and having a product delivered that really meets them. So I don't know if that's, you know, more conversation before the report comes to us, draft shared, I know it's got to be made available to the public, but it feels like so much time is lost in between these conversations. And to hear the author of the motion say it didn't meet her expectation feels to me like a real setback. I'm clear that we're not taking action, that it's a file and report. But also, I think when I hear file and report, it's like, it's done. Check that off the list and let's move on. And that's not the case, I think, today. And so I just felt the need to say that. We stay in a state of crisis with this department, which makes it difficult to plan. I get that. And yet, we must have a plan to be able to improve outcomes. The state of crisis and the requirements from the BSCC is the floor, not where we want and must be as a department to meet the true needs of young people. So how we get out of this crisis mentality where we're just responding to the BSC, with the BSCC whenever the court tells us, but get to a place where we are driving the decisions is where I hope that we will ultimately land. I'm going to try to limit my questions and will send my list to you and the other departments just not to make this go longer than it needs to be. But let me acknowledge the recent graduations of the students at Berry J. Nidorf and Campus Kilpatrick who got their associate's degrees. That's the kind of good news that we have to continue to create opportunities and make available for them. That's the good news that we don't spend enough time talking about. I appreciate, I've asked repeatedly about data, data to help inform the decisions you make at us. So I appreciate the improvement in data collection. I want to ask you some questions with regard to the population increase, the housing of our gender expansive youth, the use of Challenger Scott and Scudder, the detention decisions, and community-based placements. And I will not do the others. First of all, with regard to the population increase, one of my colleagues talked about it. And my office has heard that there have been youth who are taking plea deals out of fear based on the political winds having shifted of the prosecutors pursuing their transfer to the adult criminal system. Is that your sense, too? Because my real question is, why the significant increase? What is fueling it? That is what I'm hearing, but I'm curious as to the why.
I think it'd be improper of me to answer that directly because I don't, it presupposes that I know that that is occurring, and I've not had direct conversations with any of these young people. Secondarily, I don't provide legal advice, and they have their own counsel. What I will say is that early in the shift of district attorney, I've certainly been engaged by many folks with that sentiment. I have seen no such radical change, and my conversations with the district attorney certainly have not reflected...
Okay. So then what do you attribute the increase to, then?
I don't know, but I certainly know that the way folks feel and anticipate something happening, sometimes that's premature. So I don't know that there have been additional efforts to move young people into the adult system. I don't, I don't know that.
I get that, but then what do you think is driving the increase in your facilities?
Oh, I see. I get the question. I'm hoping it's temporary. I'm hoping that, it's so difficult without giving enough time to see the population shifts, to know if it was simply a natural or a blip, or if it's, or if it's really a policy or something that made the shift. So I think that we don't have a predictable flat line. For example, after one weekend, LP may go up by four or five, and then it's a particularly tough weekend, another three. But if you look at a point at the end of every month, over the course of six months, I don't see an increase, we see a decrease. So I, I'm hoping it's temporary, and I have not made the connection to that quite yet.
With regard to girls and gender expansive youth, we have also had motions attempting to improve outcomes and the experience of that population. And we've had that number increase. We hear the number 50 often. It decreased to 35 as of October of last year. Now, as of February, it's up to 54. 31 are predispo, 23 at Kirby, post-dispo. So I understand you're recommending moving them to Kilpatrick. Does Kilpatrick have the necessary mental health infrastructure to support them well at Kirby?
Well, none of that exists in Kilpatrick, right? Kilpatrick only has the very limited services that we have for 14 to 20 young men that are SYTF and older, so no. But I am a little shocked, to be honest, coming in today because I think this is a perfect example where the board has asked me in probation to take special attention to providing additional services to particular youth. And I have come back to you with what I consider to be the most modest of recommendations, pointing out, "I can't do that well," for example, for gender expansive youth and having safe environments, "by aligning the current resources where they are." Saying, "At Dorothy Kirby, I'm going to do this, at LP, I'm going to do this, and I'm going to have boys there." So this is really attempting to not come back to you, ask for money, not come back to you, ask for an expansion, and say, "Within what I have, and take into account the staff that I have." These are minor changes that would better align us to do better, to do better for the young people and their particular needs. And so I think you're right to point out that that is an area where we need to do better. And I'm coming back to you and saying, really, the way forward is to have one location with more specialized services that can feel safer, that looks different, that has different type of housing. And I don't have a perfect place for that to happen. And there are pros and cons to every location. But my best proposal is for it to be Kilpatrick.
And with that, I guess what we don't see is, is the appropriate mental health infrastructure even available? I don't know if someone here from DMH wants to talk about if they are in a position to provide it, to support you. Is mental health in a position to provide the additional resources to make that a safe, appropriate transfer and transition?
So as the chief was talking, Connie Draxler, Senior Deputy Director for Rantry at DMH. As the chief was talking, we have, there's a small number of youth at Kilpatrick, and so our staffing is small there also. We would need to reevaluate our staffing to determine if any staff would be willing to relocate to Kilpatrick. That could be challenging just because of location. So we would be probably looking at new hires. And that would require us to do some assessment around not only vacant, but funded positions available for us to add the staffing. But we will, we're certainly committed to looking into that and ensuring that there would be appropriate staff at Kilpatrick if this change would happen.
So I think, I don't want to speak for Supervisor Horvath, but for me, that's the kind of full-circle piece I think would be helpful for us to see in a plan. If they're going to be moved there, that mental health is already identified. Yes, we can do it. No, we cannot. If we cannot, what it takes to make it happen in terms of external partners? You know, when you say a plan, that's what I envisioned, that those questions would have already been included or answered. So thank you for that. Because based on your comments, that would impact timing and ability to make that transfer if you all have to staff up or ask staff if they're willing to go there. If not, then find people who are. Further delays the ability to make that move and transfer. Thank you, I appreciate that. Quick question on Challenger, on Scott and Scudder. I agree that there should be academy. I don't know what other counties do in terms of a physical place for an academy. But when I saw two former camps with square footage and acreage and a number of buildings, and I don't know the general number, considering the current number of probation staff, considering what it must take us in terms of cost to maintain keeping them functional and operating, do you need both of them? I can't imagine that you need both to create this academy.
So with respect to Challenger, so Challenger's not something we're pursuing?
Excuse me, Scott and Scudder. I think that's what you're, Scott and Scudder.
They're really sister camps, and there's a current assessment to determine if we need the entirety of it or a portion of it, or what would be best suited. There are certain things in which, let's say we only need one for the number of staff to determine what to do with the other location. But it has more to do with what type of use we can get out of it. But we really would come back with, they're both there because they're, I'm sorry, because they're sister, and they're at the same location. But our ultimate utilization would come after the current assessment.
Okay. It just, you know, I'm clear that we've got lots of land, lots of property that are not being used currently. And one helpful outcome from my perspective of a plan is to figure out what we're going to do with this excess real estate. And we can't get to a repurpose conversation, Supervisor Solis, until we have the plan and know what we're going to need, not just for now, but long-term. Because heaven forbid, we, you know, repurpose it and then look up and we need to build something else. And the fact that, you know, it is a common practice to build carceral institutions in, pardon me, undesirable locations, places that are not ideal in terms of people wanting to go there to work, the neighbors not wanting that kind of facility, whatever the case is. So I hope that, I will look forward to hearing what the plan is because there's real costs to con... to continuing to operate these buildings with probation staff, I'm assuming, even though we may not have people housed there, and we just need to be realistic in terms of what that means. Depopulation, that's a question I always come to, and I appreciate keeping the population down remains challenging, but we've had some progress. Will, when the detention reduction plan be expanded to address probation's policies and practices for recommending detention after intake?
That's currently underway. Chief Deputy Epps is leading the charge there. I'd have to come back to you with much more specific on what I think there'd be.
All right. I just think that as we continue to talk about the increasing, figuring out a proactive reduction plan is going to continue to really be important. I'm just scanning real quick to see what I can punt to later. I've asked in the past when we talk about community-based placements, because as we talk about, you know, reducing the number of pre-dispo young people, making sure that we've got places for them to go, I was hoping the Department of Youth Development could give me an update. Director Carroll, if you could, we've talked about, there were some barriers to accessing placement, appropriate placements, and really matching individual young people with beds, and that there was a shortage of community beds for pre-dispo youth under the age of 18. So can you give me, and you were going to do an analysis, so if you could give me a brief update on that analysis, and if there are indeed barriers, if there are other departments present here who could, you know, help us address them.
Thank you for the question, Supervisor. And yes, we've continued to, you know, to extend that analysis. You know, it started in December with 75 organizations. I think the last time I reported out, roughly 50 had responded. We're up to 62 respondents that have answered the survey. We've been reaching out individually, phone calls, et cetera. I believe the last time I came in, the actual available beds were only about 18, if I'm remembering correctly, for young people under 18. The current number that we have is about 65 potential beds available, but those facilities do have certain restrictions, right? So they will be selective as they reach out to the young people, or if they're engaged to house those young people. We certainly are excited as D Y D to be part of an innovative solution to get young people back into the community, but we recognize the limits of our authority. So we certainly think that the defense bar, the judges, the bench, as well as probation, have a lot more control in those decisions. So we certainly want all those partners to be brought to the table. We have actually engaged with both the defense bar and the judges to find out, first of all, if it's something they would be interested in offering.
As have I.
Yeah. So there seems to be a level of interest from both of those parties. So we want to continue to convene, but certainly want to make sure that probation is part of that conversation, and in any way we can assist, we are certainly available to do that.
So I appreciate that. You know, the reason I've continued to raise it is, as we've talked about it being our preferred option, we needed to make sure that the capacity was there as we engaged those conversations, asking members of the bench and bar to support us in that. One quick question for probation. I know that, I think historically, one of the challenges has been probation's, I don't know if it's statute or just an unwilling, or internal policy, has not been able or willing to allow D Y D to have access to juvenile case files, as we're talking about who is best poised to transition into these community-based settings. And so is that statute, is that policy? Having access to juvenile case files, for example, that would allow us to figure out if we could match youth at Los Pedrinos into community-based placements.
Does County Council want to answer that? Do I get to punt over to County Council?
I'll accept the point, yes. Good afternoon, Supervisors. To the question, there is an impediment in the statute at this point that would prevent the sharing of that information as described. I think there are some efforts to address that.
So it is, is it the statute that says that probation must be the lead agency for all?
Sorry, that is one of them. I think there's also a separate welfare and institutions code section that speaks to that issue.
Okay, so we'll follow up on that, because I think those are some of the structural issues, as we're really trying to talk about making sure that young people can be in the least restrictive, most appropriate environment, making sure that there aren't structural issues preventing us from making that happen. If we get the community to identify beds, we want to make sure that they can be transferred there. Madam Chair, I'll punt the rest of my questions to the appropriate departments at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis.
Yes, I apologize for asking so many questions at the beginning, but... So I wanted to ask our chief, today, what was your intent with the presentation? If this is a receiving file, and, you know, is this, this is something to allow for us to react to, or, you know, how did all of this evolve? And I know we had motions that directed you to do a lot of this, to put together a global plan, but I wanted to kind of have that from you, at least if you could outline that.
Supervisor, to be completely honest, I intended on providing a presentation that really, from my perspective, was as mild as any, because, one, uses existing resources, wasn't asking to develop any new sites, wasn't asking for additional money, wasn't asking to expand beds, wasn't asking to do any of that. As a matter of fact, maybe different than County Council, I don't think any of the things individually proposed here are outside the scope of ordinary probation business. However, you are the Board of Supervisors, you're my boss. I am trying to implement your vision in the county, so it's extraordinarily imperative that I get your feedback and know where to go back and see where I've missed the mark. But I'll tell you, individually, I don't think there is actually anything in here that's outside the scope of normal business in probation.
We want change. Well, I, you know, for me, I know that we've had a lot of discussions about reimagining how probation would work and what we would do with all this excess property in camps, because they're certainly underutilized now. But I think that, you know, this is a first step, and for me, the way I perceive this is that this is now a discussion template for all of us and for the folks behind you, as well as our communities and people that care about this issue. So I don't see this as cemented in any way, and I do think, and that's what I want to hear from you, is that this is just, for me at least, a discussion, and we're having a discussion then to come back and have appropriate feedback, and including, you know, the board, and meeting again individually with board members. Because I, to be honest, I mean, I was, I was, on the one hand, surprised how aggressive the plan is from my perspective, because I hadn't ever seen it all put together like this. You've been asked by the board about what your plans were, but it was never put in writing. And to see it today, I think it could have been helpful to have it in advance and maybe walk through with the board, each member to say, hey, this is, what do you think? You know, what are your ideas here? And then obviously, making sure that the folks that have been meeting with you, that we've asked, that are behind you right now, that they have the appropriate input. And it may not be that we all agree on everything, because that's just not the way things work here all the time at the county. And I'm really, I'm, I am impressed to hear, though, that you're not asking for more money, but what does that mean right now, in time? In time, because if we have to rearrange finding mental health staff that are going to be reprogrammed or hired up, those are all costs that we have to take into consideration. And that, as a board member, I do want to, I do want to have a clear understanding what that means, and also the training for employees, new employees that you want to bring in. I kind of agree, I don't know if you need two places for that training, and I get it that they're in the same regional area, but thinking through what all of that really means, and really talking about the kind of personnel that we want to attract, because it isn't the same anymore. And I think that constantly has to be brought out, that we're looking at a different method of treating and working and healing our young people and trying to make them whole, and it's hard, because the clock is ticking, and we have a lot of other things that are kind of overpowering some of our own decisions now. And part of it is fiscal. We haven't even talked about that. But I just wanted to say that, I'm not going to say in your defense, but I will say that I'm happy that at least you gave us something so that we could react to, and then continue to have these opportunities to meet with you, to talk with the other staff too, departments, and see where they're at, and what skin in the game they really have, because that was the whole purpose of having the other departments here as well. That was made very clear to us. I think that's really important, and then also what your progress has been with staffing, and being able to retain staff and have staff show up, so we can have the best laid plans, but again, we have to keep the eye on the ball. Problem that we don't have sufficient staff and appropriate staff showing up, because I don't care if you have a body, if a body don't care about what's happening there, that doesn't solve anybody's problem. But I think those are things that I want to hear as we move forward with your plan. Okay? I don't know if you want to react to that.
I appreciate your comments, they're always very helpful. I just do want to make a point of clarification. I would not have presented anything to you that another department had was catastrophic, cannot be done. So while the work is not done, because it's simply a starting point, that was the purpose of, you know, advancing that. We wouldn't present anything. At some point, I have to present what I think is the best plan, knowing that there, from what we have, there is no location that is perfect for any population. And so, you know, if you look at my board, there are 15 different permutations how to do this, each one of them having a challenge in front of it. And so what we certainly cannot do is continue paralyze where we are, because we know that we need to do better and provide more services, and some of it requires population changes. Thank you.
Yeah, and I actually echo what Supervisor Solis was saying, and I guess I would just say, I mean, I know that the purpose was to see if this was a direction the board would sign off on, because it's very labor, at least this is what my staff told me, this is very labor-intensive to put together an overall plan and do a deep dive. So you wanted the board to better understand the direction you're moving in, and that's why it's a receiving file. Is that correct?
Very accurate, thank you.
And, you know, I mean, in terms of like, when I look at AfraBa and the recommended closing of PAGE, if you close PAGE, does AfraBa staying open allow you to reopen if you need that space? Or does that have to, with the licensing all over again? Because I'm looking at like Scott and, what is it, Scott and Scudder? Not Scudder, is it Scudder? That are up, yeah, that when those two closed, in order to reopen them, we have to go through a lot more than if we just kept them open and maintained them, correct?
That's absolutely true. You know, the advantage we have in terms of the East camps is that the rated capacity for the two remaining camps far exceeds any of our plans to utilize them. So we're not planning on even reaching that ceiling. It'll be an ongoing conversation on whether we want to continue PAGE sort of as that backup and not lose that licensing. It gets a little complicated, because I think if I failed to mention at the beginning, if we plan to do that, then there is some investment that we would have to make there, which I was trying to avoid by keeping it open for the housing of young people.
But there's investment you need to make even at Los Pedrinos and Perry Nidor, correct?
Yes, except that the funds or the...
There are...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I guess, you know, my understanding is that the direction that you, as a chief probation officer, want to take is what you're recommending in these slides, and today's receiving file. If you don't hear objections, you're going to begin to do the next phase, which is what I think Supervisor Mitchell was asking, and Supervisor Horbath, in terms of the meat on the bones of the recommendation you're making, correct?
Yeah, the next stage would be work groups for each one of these with our county partners, after those are settled, then with the community at large.
Okay. And just in closing, I'd like to say, I really appreciate the Dorothy Kirby Center and the complex mental health and special needs facility, because to your point right now, we don't have that space. And I think it's important, especially when I talk to probation officers and even parents that are frustrated because they know their kids need the help, but they're not getting it. It's same thing in the jails. We have the same problem in jail. I mean, we know that we need to provide a better level of service and care, and yet we struggle with that. And so I think it's important for us to recognize an opportunity to do that. So I appreciate that. So with that, Supervisor Hahn, and then Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, well, you know, I obviously have objections to this, but I don't think I'm in the majority here. But, and just for clarification, Dorothy Kirby actually is our space for mental health for our girls. So, and by the way, I think Dorothy Kirby is one of those that works well right now. It's one of the facilities that actually works well, but you're proposing to move all the girls and then, and put the young men in there. That's correct. I guess for me, if you're going to, if there is a next step, and what would have helped me today, Chief, would have been to take each of these proposals, each of these facilities, just so I know you've thought through it, like, okay, I'm recommending that the girls go to Kilpatrick. Now, I realize that's farther away from where they are, where the staff is in commerce. That'll be a challenge, but here's what I'm thinking. That's a little bit farther away for court transport, but here's what I'm thinking. And every one of them, because it felt like the questions you got in Cluster, some of the questions today, it just felt like maybe you didn't think through all these. That may be wrong, that may be wrong, but I think it would help me going forward that you take each of these ideas, and I think some of them do have a price tag on them. And I think that for us to really make an informed decision moving forward, I think, you know, we need a price tag, we need pros and cons kind of of each of your suggestions, so that we can make a more informed decision if this is the direction we want to go. I think this was just, yes, global, but it didn't give me enough comfort that you have thought through all the challenges that this global plan presents. And again, I'll go back to, I think our biggest problem is not facilities, it's a lot more than that. So that would be my suggestion, the next time we see this. It answers my concerns about challenges, staffing, and price tag, because I think there is a price tag to some of this. Anytime you see construction and renovation, there's a price tag to that. I just, I just think we would like to know it.
Those are really two points. One of them with respect to, I don't want you leaving thinking that I'm saying that there isn't cost involved. What I'm saying is that the, the large projects have to take place, or there's already an accounted-for price on that tied to something else, for example, DOJ, or tied to so. What we're trying to do is, we're going to spend this money, what's the best way to do it that's actually going to help? What I am a little bit dismayed by is if I gave you the impression that the questions being posed, or that the staffers are presenting are things that we didn't think through, nothing could be further from the truth. As a matter of fact, some of these questions, we have repeatedly... As a matter of fact, some of these questions, we have repeatedly, now, some of them don't have a good answer because there are two, there are alternatives that our partners in probation will have to take place, it's not gonna be perfect. So if I gave you the impression that hadn't thought through any of these things, nothing could be further from the truth, I think what I was trying to say is that, that a decision point hadn't been made, it would be premature for them.
Good point Supervisor Han. Supervisor Mitchell.
I just wanted to follow up on your comment when you outlined, Madam Chair, what your expectations would be for the following, for the, the next steps and, and as you responded, the next step is to connect with departments, to kind of put the meat on the bones, if you will. If you could just give me a sense of the timing of that, I don't know, I don't remember if the motion required a report back on a regular cycle, so just what, what could we expect in terms of when to see the next iteration where the other departments will kind of put their stamp on the plan?
So the original motion Supervisor called for quarterly reports, so we'll be back in May, August and November.
So May will be the next time we hear the plan with, as Supervisor Horvath would say, all the things.
But, but is that keeping in line, I mean, with what the constraints are with the state and all? I mean, I, I think that was self-imposed by us.
By the motion.
Right, exactly. And so the question, I mean, is that gonna impact?
It, it, so if I could just be extraordinarily blunt?
Please do.
It depends if the objection is to the plan in its totality or simply the more difficult components that come at the third and fourth point. So for example, if there's no objection with moving forward on, on, on the finalization of leaving Central, that's something that if you take a look at the timeline, we move forward with, we continue meeting on the other components. If for example, the Page component or the East Camps is not in question here, we move forward and it simply gives us more time on addressing the concerns and, and maybe pivoting on what I think I'm hearing more than anything else is the Kilpatrick and the Dorothy Kirby. So if, if those, if that order of operations is in line, then, then this timeline works.
So you know, item 35 though is a monthly, thank you to Eddie, is a monthly report on the third Tuesday of the month, so maybe we have, come back third Tuesday of the month and have an update on the plan moving forward.
That's fine with me, because I guess my real question was, as you said, are we waiting for the full plan before any movement happens? And I'm hearing that you're saying no.
There are things
That there are things that are moving and will move even as the plan continues to evolve.
I wouldn't be so bold, I'm looking for concurrence that it is okay to proceed with those early items.
So, but yeah, for instance
How does that work?
Yeah, you have Campus Kilpatrick, it commences, depopulation commences June 1st, that means you're moving them out June 1st and, and we're moving in the girls. I, I feel like there's a lot in this global plan, Madam Chair, that has specific dates that is, that is moving forward before I feel like a lot of it has been worked out.
And that's my concern, is there are some things that are quite specific and there are other things that are not at all spelled out. And I don't hear resounding affirmation from our other departments. For the sake of time, I'm not calling them up to the dais, but I think if they were really excited about this plan, yes, it solves a lot of the challenges in public health, in mental health, in health services, then we would be hearing resounding support and excitement, but that's not what we're hearing. It's my understanding, this plan was presented to them on Friday. And so I can't affirm a plan and this magnitude of movement until I understand that our departments, Ms. Drexler commented on the challenges that mental health anticipates and I, I don't understand why we can't have them work together to present a plan that is informed by all of our departments before it comes to us. I don't think that's asking a lot.
So I will say that I don't expect the department, I mean, they are clients of probation in essence. And so I would hope that the second round would be bringing the departments in to build on that. I actually am watching the department heads who are lousy poker players, by the way, because I'm watching you and I know that you're not, I can tell Dr. Gerardo that you have not been consulted on this, I mean, it's very obvious by the faces, but then again, I think we wanna know the direction or Guillermo wants to know the direction that the board is okay with. I'm okay with it. I say move forward and bring us proposal. It's a receive and file. At the end of the day, I think the frustration I have is, this is like the 100th time we've discussed probation, no, before Guillermo, in terms of a direction. And on the SYTF at Berry Nidor, we had an opportunity eight years ago to address that and we didn't do it. And so now we're back to square one. And if we don't give clear direction or at least the ability for our chief probation officer to make a determination based on what we hired him for as a subject expert, then it's, it's, we're gonna be back here next year having the same discussion. And I just don't think that's what we want. I mean, I, I'm not saying Supervisor Horvath that this is perfect, but I believe we need to now allow him to begin to put the meat on the bone to see what that looks like. I wouldn't want him going and talking to my cities unless this was a direction that I felt comfortable for him to take. So, you know, I, and now obviously I think Laverne's gonna know that Page is on the table, but I think it's important for us to let our subject expert provide a report to us based on his recommendation and then bring the proposal back with more information moving forward. But if this is direction that the board is comfortable with him going in, I think that's what he's looking for. I know, and, and believe me, I don't think we're gonna get 5-0 on this, but it's some, and it's a receive and file today.
So if I could follow up on the question I asked, that I appreciate the motion said quarterly, which is how we got the May ant response, I would ask that, I appreciate that's what the motion said and if the motion's author would be open to us setting a different date that we want to hear the next step.
I don't have prob, and, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, since you were blunt, I'm gonna be blunt. I think part of the reason why you'd wanna do it in public is because you don't get a straight answer, you get different answers from different board offices and you don't have a clear direction to go. Is that correct?
If I waited for unanimity either by department heads or by this board, it's five years from now, we would still be talking about this.
That's why we're doing it this way, in, in incremental pieces so that you can get direction in terms of your recommendation and then move to the next?
I'm, I'm, again, and I, and I hope I haven't overstepped, I'm incredibly sensitive to the direction each supervisor has and their vision for. So I simply propose that if you take a look at the two initial items in terms of time, the first one is Central, the second one is Page.
Correct.
If between now and when we meet again, we move forward on that, that gives us time to continue to come before you and give updates on the other pieces.
I think that's what, that's what you said Supervisor Mitchell, correct?
I said, I just don't wanna wait till May.
Yeah, so I think that's the direction that, if that's the direction you were taking with this receive and file, because there's no vote taking place.
But Madam Chair, what about these other commencement dates if we receive and file it? Does that stick?
No, but I'd be before you, before then. I think that what I'm hearing is that you want to hear after the work groups begin, you want to hear from the other department heads, you want to
Yeah.
Know more specifics on whether services can be provided, so we wouldn't move forward on that.
Then they should be taken out of this proposal. That's what I have a problem with. I, I'm okay with the
Which, which slide you want?
And the Central, but already depopulating Kilpatrick, June 1st. Then, you know, when do they, when, when do you have the girls moving into there? We populate female population
I think you said you were gonna let them like
Relocate female population September 1st.
But I thought you said that you just weren't gonna assign new people there and eventually it would zero out, correct?
That's correct.
I would be more comfortable if, if you take those dates out, because Madam Chair, I, I would say when you said, I don't think we'll ever get a 5-0 support, I disagree with that. I think we could support a plan, but I, it's almost like I would like him to go back to the drawing board and do it in a way that does include our stakeholders, does include our, our departments, does include feedback from the supervisors, particularly with the facilities in our district, includes our Justice Department, our Justice Deputy's feedback, then bring it to us. And I think it'd be easier for us to embrace that. And no matter what you think Guillermo, this is not mild propos, this is pretty aggressive, honestly, and, and that's okay. It's just very aggressive with, but for me, it hasn't been vetted enough to have actual dates on some of your proposals.
So I, I'm just gonna speak for myself. I do not want this delegated to Justice Deputies, that's why I want it at the board, because we are going before, well, I want the feedback to come from the board, because the state is very involved in this and we are the ones that are being held accountable when it comes to conditions and what are we doing for probation and that's why I believe it was elevated to the board at some point. I, I'm not
It went to Cluster, so it's, it went to Cluster and they had some comments and they had good questions.
And that, I think that's part of Guillermo's frustration, quite frankly, is that the consistency on guidance given by deputies versus the board differ. Guillermo?
I mean, I have serious concerns, I have serious concerns with the idea of starting fresh. It, I, I mean, obviously, we will move forward as you determine, however, this, the considerations that led to this didn't begin yesterday.
Right.
A year ago, many of these ideas were socialized with board offices who had very different ideas and ultimately, I have to make the best recommendation of what I believe moving forward would be. Of course, it's, it's your decision.
Supervisor, did you wanna say something Supervisor Horvath?
I'm just saying, I, I've worked very hard and very closely with my communities to have an engaged process of what's happening in a neighborhood. I think all of you would prefer that. These facilities, two of them that we've been talking about are in my district. I know one is in Supervisor Han's district. To state the obvious, we're divided as a board on, on how we want to proceed and how we want to empower this department to proceed. And I think that community input matters and if people were upset and calling your offices saying, we need more detail to understand what's happening, you would want them to have that opportunity. They haven't had that opportunity, they don't know what's going on with these facilities and I think that's not responsible to a community. I don't think it's responsible to our department directors who are expected to provide services and I don't think it's, and most importantly, I don't think it serves the young people who are entrusted to our care. So we can do this by votes and, and proceed that way because we have to make progress, but at the end of the day, there are better ways to have votes, we know that, and sometimes we take more difficult votes and I understand that too. So if this is how we wanna proceed, I just would be prepared that we're gonna have a lot of upset community members who didn't have their say in, in how these facilities will operate in their communities.
And, and if you thought that I meant keep the community out, I didn't. What I said was, when Justice Deputies were brought up, I said that it should be discussed in open forum at the board meeting, because my information coming from the department is, is that sometimes what is coming out of the clusters and then what comes out of our board are not always consistent. So I felt that it's probably better to have it come straight to us and be transparent so that the public can hear what's being discussed and I think it's important and I know there's advocates in the, in the audience that wanna know the discussion rather than it being done in, yeah, well, but there, I think our input, like right now, we're giving input and the public can hear it, I think that's important. At the end of the day, I mean, that's just, but I, the community, I agree, I mean, Page is in my district and Afra Ba and I understand that the communities don't wanna read about it in the paper, they want to be a part of the discussion to better, best understand what exactly is being proposed. I support that 100%, 100%. But I think today, the purpose was to say, this is the direction I wanna go in, now you're gonna take it? If this is the direction the board gives you the green light to go in to the next step, correct?
That's accurate.
Supervisor Mitchell?
I just wanna make sure that we don't lose sight of when we talk about community impacted, while the second district doesn't house any of these facilities, the second district is certainly overrepresented based on the young people in them. So I too have a vested interest in what happens where on behalf of the constituents who I represent. So when we talk about community engagement, it's not just those who live close to facilities, it's those family members who have young people in them. So I am hoping, based on this conversation, that we can agree to, we're not taking a vote, that he will go forward on the two actions that you talked about that you're ready to move forward on.
Close Central and Page.
Mm-hmm. And that we agree to come back with a plan that includes input from the other departments who, their role and involvement will help increase the likelihood of a, of the success of this plan. And it is an ongoing conversation and process that, you know, even though people, and, and me too, may have questioned with some elements of the plan, that today feels premature to kick any elements of the plan off the table without them having been fully fleshed out and informed by other department heads. So if there's agreement on initial actions and if we can get agreement on a date to come back with a more fleshed out plan that is not as far off as May, I think that makes sense for next steps.
And, and I agree and I wanna get a clarification, because Supervisor Han and I both, I think, are trying to connect the dots. A receive and file is just a receive and file, but there's two action items, closing Central and Page, correct? So by receiving and file, don't we have to take a vote on that?
Well, no. So normally with a receive and file, just like any department's receive and file, the board doesn't take action. If there's something that the board has received in that report back that they then want to bring a motion on, you wouldn't do it today because the board, the, the public hasn't been given notice that you're going to act on anything in that report today.
Got it, so
But Madam Chair, does, do those two actions require board action?
Yeah.
That's the question.
Yeah. Do they?
We're stuck on the receiving file, but the point is, he may have
That's exactly right.
The authority to take action on those things.
I, while we, my understanding, I did not include anything in here that I believed required your approval. I am seeking your approval because I am trying to implement your vision, but all of these items with respect to funding, locations, everything else is
So you can close Central and Page without board taking action? I mean, that's your, that's within?
Well, I don't know the answer to that question. What I do know is that the motion specifically directed that, that his plan be approved by this board. So any, any, any plan that he has for any facility, based on the motion that was passed, it requires it to be approved by the board, which is, I would think, based on any recommendation that he has, the, someone would bring forward a motion to move forward on any, any specific recommendation that he's putting forward.
But not today, but not today.
Not today.
So someone would bring forth a motion saying, I move that we close Page and
We, go ahead Guillermo.
I, and, and again, county council can differ here, I don't think there is anything inherently required of the board for me to close. However, many of the items have been tied to budget items or the use of funds, which is how we get to prior requests for approval, but again.
Okay. I'm just referencing the motion
Yeah, I, I understand and so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna take leadership role here and just say, this is a receive and file and we're gonna do public comment now, because we can all discuss this till the cows come home and there's no, no action to be taken. I think you've heard Guillermo, all the concerns from all the board offices in terms of what expectations are, whether it be a more deep dive in terms of the departments and their role and, and them being brought into discussion or community engagement. And so I would ask that you take that into consideration, but I think the direction, at least from majority, is that this is the direction to go in right now. is that this is the direction to go in right now. But understanding that we're going to get more information based on just comments that have been made about how different departments are going to work on the campuses. And then on Kilpatrick, how you're going to depopulate and then repopulate. And then on Los Pedrinos, keeping the population there while the remodel. I mean, there's different levels of questions that have been asked.
Yeah, but also, you know, for instance, we, it's true, we can't move predispositioned girls to Kilpatrick unless BSCC inspects it and signs off on it. So that's, I don't know how we can have a date certain for that until we hear, until they have to inspect it and sign off on it. And if they don't, you know, again, then that's just a, it's a cascading event.
It's absolutely true. Thank you for that point. I also had these nightmares. If I present you a plan with no dates, I think the first thing you would ask is, "Well, what, your anticipated dates?" So these are starting points, taking into consideration all of the things that need to take place with some flexibility. But I think I've heard you loud and clear with respect to today's presentation. I've taken note of your concerns. I've taken note of the fact that you want to hear from me again and from the county partners with more specificity on many of the items that you have presented, plus others that will come up in those sessions with the other departments.
Okay, this is a receive and file. So unless anyone else has any questions?
Supervisor, did you want to, Supervisor Mitchell's point, not waiting until May, did you want to continue the matter to a sooner date or leave the May quarterly date?
We already are scheduled to come back every month on the third Tuesday.
Yeah, that's what I, that's why, when I said that Eddie told us that, so we're going to have this is third Tuesday. All right, with that, executive officer, would you please call those members of the public who've signed up to speak on these items?
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you. Aria Blakely, Brooklyn Love, Cornelius Pettis, Damaria P., Deanna Pittman, Deneen Sutton-Smith, Dr. Critical Truth Bay, Emily Paz, Evelyn Espinal, Jacob Jackson, Josara Holliday, Jeff Hines, Kaylee Matthews, Kate Teague, Lena Mallett, Marcus Nunez, Melinda Kikani, Nina Moore, Peaches Robledo, Tahida Shakur, Thomas Bell, Trinity Rutherford, and Tyreek Ship. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address items 34 and 35, if you have not already done so, please press 1, then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Please state the item number you are speaking on. Byron Jose, your line is open. You may begin.
Good afternoon, board supervisors. Byron Jose, with the Zantapina Coalition and Reimagine L.A. Thank you Supervisor Horvath and Mitchell for uplifting the voice of the communities, ensuring that this process is informed and engages not just stakeholders, the providers, but also the youth who survive the camps and have direct lived experience. A jail will never be a home, whether it's prefab or not, whether you call it a pod, however you want to phrase it, it will still continue to be a cage. We want to make sure that the alignment to care is ensuring all the, all the departments, not just a blanket free rein for a paralegal officer to do as he pleases. How do we ensure that we move forward with decarcerating the growth in gender expansive youth in this camp and freeing all our youth through coordination of services and care? And I want to make sure that you listen to the voices of the young people that have been spending all afternoon trying to have an input in this thing and decisions that impact their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state the item number you are speaking on. Zoe Rossin, your line is open. You may begin.
Yes, Zoe Rossin, speaking on items 34 and 35. I'm part of List Fund Zero Now Collective. We're trauma and gender responsive community practitioners, and we're using care teams. We've worked with five girls and gender expansive young people to support their release from detention and reentry care just in 2025, that's two months. Each young person has an individualized care team, and we aim to bring two to three more young people out of detention with care teams each month. Our plan is to serve them for as long as it takes. That is the pace of youth development. The majority of girls and gender expansive youth detained currently are, as a result of probation, overriding their risk assessment. We can release those young people immediately and initiate care teams with Zero Now Care Coordination. Every care team is coordinated by experienced community leadership.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state the item number you are speaking on. Eric Previn, your line is open. You may begin.
Okay, it's Eric Previn. First of all, I think when you hire a guy like Mr. Viero Rosa, you need to let him do his job, okay? So the guy has made some recommendations, and I think we need to embrace his choice. He's been subjected to five views, you know, two different groups. It's very important. And the communities are important to listen to. But at a certain point, when we're where we are now, which is in a abject lunacy container, we're flying around in circles, waiting for reports, and trying all different things. Let's go. We have to let the man do his job. I don't, I don't agree with every single thing he said, but he's trying, and we need to allow that to grow and move forward. I don't know how much longer this can go on. When the old guy, Jerry, who was buying Costco vacations for his wife, or his girlfriend, was in charge, there was something called Paragraph 60. We said, "Let him out. We can't keep this probation because of what it does is it metastasizes into a dangerous situation." And that's where we are right now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state the item number you are speaking on. Roy Humphries, your line is open. You may begin.
Oh, thank you. Probation started in 1903. Here we're 2025, and you still haven't mastered the fundamentals. My God. And we know the mother milk of all of this is money. Show me the money. Show me the budget. And on the presentation, how, why can't we have three or four different scenarios? And with a cost-effective situation? And take a selection what you can deal with instead of taking so much time and running around in circles? This is an embarrassment that this has been going on. And I've been looking at this stuff for like decades on this. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state the item number you are speaking on. Sir Bailey, your line is open. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Sir Bailey, speaking on 34 and 35. First of all, thank you Supervisor Horvath for your vote last time around. Wishing more would have followed that suit and probably wouldn't be here. Decarceration, youth justice reimagined. Looks like families having fun, laughing in the sun, not probation officers on the run, and BOS foot dragging. We insist, please do persist, don't persist. We insist, please don't persist. And ruling like the prison industry is all that exists to keep us safe or secure the space, when the truth is, this business does neither or neither. DEI is in the windstorm. Military Prison Industrial Club practice provides the fire to burn all hope of kids in LP ever getting out and getting onto that golf course. Free the 70% immediately, then they pass the labs. And stop dehumanizing, stop demonizing the 30% as if forever all bad. A free seed in love soil, save communities' growth. But state in place of mom and dad.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
State the item number you are speaking on. Daisy Burns, your line is open. You may begin.
34 and 35. Focusing on reducing the LP population. Judge Espinoza on Friday ordered a review of each individual there to determine who should be returned to the community, which surprisingly was not already underway. That review should be expedited. On the legal point regarding DYD's involvement, the public defender should be consulted on possible client waivers to allow the sharing of information. In addition, the board should refer any youth who are at LP solely because they have no safe home to return to for immediate placement by an appropriate county department and should insist on a process for pre-detention non-carceral placement for future youth who fall into this category. No youth should be in a locked facility because of an abusive home. Finally, please do not close Camp Page. At Friday's hearing, the court repeatedly asked about the availability of camp space. We should recognize that space is desirable for both pre- and post-adjudication youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state the item number you are speaking on. Helen Eisenberg, your line is open. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Helen Eisenberg. I'm part of Hangout Do Good, and I'm a constituent in SD3. And I'm speaking on behalf of items 34 and 35. I'm in strong opposition to the probation department's most recent facility plan, included in item 34. Thank you Supervisor Horvath for your concerns and questions. Supervisor Han, Mitchell, and Solis, I share your sentiments. I wish you all had thought about these things before your last vote to give the chief executive power, though. How can we address the plan when we are still deep in crisis? Why haven't we done reassessments of the youth at LP and released those girls there that we know are not a threat to the community or themselves, and boys as well, who could be back in the community? And how about those nine 13-year-olds? It is hard for me to place any trust in the sheep when I know about all the dysfunction in LP and the lack of transparency and accountability, his inability to get buy-in from his staff. We continue to fail our youth. We have so much work to do. We must change the culture. We must end the mistreatment. We must put these youths at the center of every conversation. I actually do believe we know what works. We are wasting time at the expense of our youth. And I'm asking all to stop discussing and be brave and lead. Thank you.
Tina Davis, your line is open. You may begin.
Yes, good evening. One thing I wanted to point out, just listening and looking over the global plan that Guillermo presented to the board, I do believe it's a good plan. However, it does not address, like Supervisor Han said, the staffing issue. And that continues to be a concern among his, among his own employees, I should say. He does not communicate with the employees to tell them, "Hey, this is what I want to do with you." He just treats each employee like, like it's, you know, like a game of chess. You're the checkers. He doesn't look at the employees as if they're human beings. I believe Supervisor Han brought up also about sending employees away to another place. Well, right now, he sends people that live in the San Fernando Valley to Downey to work. So, I mean, I don't, I'm just confused with everything.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Latisha Parbalo, your line is open. You may begin.
Yeah, I think you mean Lupita Carreño. And I'm here speaking on 34 and 35. I'm representing the Sister Warriors Freedom Coalition. The BOS needs to remain focused on reducing the population inside juvenile facilities, particularly by following through on their commitment of decarcerating girls and gender expansive youth. The issue with juvenile halls are not about the building themselves, they're about the lack of proper staffing. We have, we need to reduce the population to truly address the concerns and reports of sexually abuse inside these facilities. Let's not forget the L.A. Times article from August 2022, which reported that 70 girls were sexually assaulted in juvenile camps by probation employees over the span of more than three decades. This is not an outdated issue. It is very much still happening. The department has yet to hire new staff. And who would want to work in an environment with a reputation of sexually assaulted misconduct, excessive force, and even drug possession? These girls deserve a space where they can feel safe, have a self-determination, and access the tools to be, to need to succeed.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
It is time to involve...
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
Thank you. We will now go to in-person speakers. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Cornelius Pettis. According to Deanna Carlisle with the Human Resources, she states that we have 656 officers on forced leave. I'm one of them. I do a 90-day rotation, which basically means I work half a year. I don't know how I can take care of my kids, my aging parents, all the responsibilities I'm working half a year. But then, instead of paying me regular time, I'm off work for half a year, they pay somebody else overtime to come do my functions while I'm doing that. As far as the plan that I heard, it's, I wouldn't even call it a plan. My five-year-old granddaughter could do a better job. We look like we're playing musical chairs. We're moving kids from here to there. We're moving staff from here to there, and it's not working. The other thing I heard is that Chief C. wanted to tell employees how he feels about it. Well, he'd make very clear how he feels about it. It's not positive. Everything hinges around safety at Los Pedrinos, the hiring, the retention, the promotion, the retirement, and the morale. Our morale has tanked.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Deneen Sutton-Smith, an officer with L.A. County probation for over 25 years. Adoption of the global plan. A global plan means worldwide. This plan needs to address the local municipality of the Los Angeles County. Once one of the largest probation departments is being depleted, downsized due to the poor leadership. In bringing LP into compliance, we're talking about reassigning the DPO I's that are lower paid. If that's the strategy, you've used DPO II's for the past several years, and it's still been unsuccessful. You have over 1,300 officers that are being sent home due to MOU violations, EEOC, ADA, retaliation, and discrimination. This plan is faulty, inaccurate, and immeasurable to the needs of L.A. County probation. The plan does not address the safety of our youth, our staff, or the public within our facilities and our population. You are putting the constituents at risk.
Period. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Deanna Pittman. I use sheer pronouns, and I'm here with the Young Women's Freedom Center. I want to start off by saying that probation and Guillermo have lost the entire trust of the community. The details outlining their global plan are alarming. Just three years ago, this board realized that we had to reexamine the entire system of locking up girls. Fast forward to now, we're looking at a plan to double down on locking up girls and gender expansive youth. This proposal to create a gender-specific juvenile hall is short-sighted and unresponsive to the actual needs of our girls. Transferring boys out of Kilpatrick, a camp that was literally designed to meet their needs, is like pulling the rug from beneath them. We want to reinforce that youth do not belong in cages. 87% of the girls in our program have not recidivated, and we have youth in coordinated care teams that have successfully come home. Six youths in the past two months. If we continue this...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Trinity Rutherford.
My name is Trinity Rutherford. I am formerly incarcerated. I am now a community organizer at the Young Women's Freedom Center. Today I am here because it saddens my heart to see young people being treated like they're on display, paraded around like zoo animals. When I was moved from Los Pedrinos to Berry J, it hurt deeply. It felt like I was being pushed away, as if I were the problem. Being separated from my family took a huge toll on my mental health, especially knowing they couldn't visit me because I was so far away. I feel these children because I know firsthand how much privacy and stability matters. Consistently moving young people around from facility to facility, like transfers to Kilpatrick, does nothing to improve their conditions. It only causes more harm to those who should be, we should be trying to heal. So let's stand firm in our community, and let's uphold change, and yeah, for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Damaria Player. I'm a youth organizer at Young Women's Freedom Center. I am nineteen years old, system impacted, and formerly incarcerated. I initially came here to ask y'all to really think about the rejuvenation of these young girls and gender expansive youth. Furthermore, the issue is the careless use of county funds. Young Women's Freedom Center has gotten six youth released in the last month and a half. Our success rate is eighty-seven percent, meaning eighty-seven percent of the youth that we've helped with resources haven't been back in detention. If we could help rejuvenate these female youth in that short amount of time, envision what would happen if y'all funded more organizations, helping the youth and their families. The goal isn't just to take them off the street. The goal is to keep them off the street and ensure their success. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Brooklyn from the Young Women's Freedom Center. I'm here today to urge the board to please reconsider probation's global plan. We have been here time and time after again to advocate for freeing our youth. In two thousand twenty-one, you passed a motion to decarcerate girls and gender expansive youth from juvenile halls. At one point in time, you agreed that decarceration was a solution. Probation action plan is just another piece of paper that will have a negative domino effect. Probation has a history of lying and doing the bare minimum to help improve the harsh conditions, which leaves community to not trust them. Renovations is not the answer. Construction is just not the answer. This move will cause major risk for the safety of our young people. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Emily. I am twenty-three years old, formerly system impacted. I am here today to discuss the responsibility of county funds going into probation's global plan. According to the report, tens of millions of dollars are going into new capital projects and facility beautification. This money could go into resources and community programs. Thank you for your time. Please consider funding programs and letting girls and gender expansive youth out instead of inflicting more trauma on the girls and gender expansive youth.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everybody. My name is Evelyn. I'm a, I'm a member of the Young Women's Freedom Center. I'm eighteen years old and system impacted. I am here today to demand you to stop irresponsible use of county funds. I'm also here to ask you to consider an alternative plan for girls and gender expansive youth. We are the alternative. At our center, we offer healing circles, leadership opportunities, and mentors. To keep girls out, invest in community resources like us. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Nina, and I am a member of the Young Women's Freedom Center. I am twenty-three years of age and have been system impacted all throughout my teenage years of life. I am here today to ask the board of supervisors in the system of probation, do you have a conscience? Simply just due to the fact that data shows ninety-nine percent of predispositioned young girls and gender expansive youth could be safe, safely served with community. So yes, it's very unjust of you to just make young girls and gender expansive youth move to a whole nother facility built off a foundation based for young, based for the growth of young boys. Coming from me, a formerly incarcerated young adult now being moved around consistently as a young girl was utterly hurtful to my mental and disastrous to my growth as a youth, barely getting a chance. So honestly, I don't feel like you have a conscience, because if you did, you wouldn't allow the disruption of...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Who's gonna, yeah, right, you're on. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Tardashakor. I'm with the Youth Justice Coalition. I'm here to, today to stand against a global plan that's nothing more than a tactic to keep young people locked away. Right now, of the fifty girls being sent to Kilpatrick, twenty-seven are pre-positioned, meaning they haven't even been sentenced yet and should be in community-based care. This is an injustice. It's crazy that young people are being denied due process, and even crazier that probation continues to prove it cannot care for them. Yet it's still trusted to take, yet they're still trusted to make decisions that affect their futures. As a board of supervisors, you cannot pretend to care about youth when your actions tell a different story. Our partners, and we have achieved much higher success rates with a fraction of the budget, proving that community-based programs work. The true measure of society can be found on how it treats its most vulnerable members, Gandhi. Young people deserve the future we imagine for them, not the ones you've chosen. It's time for a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Kaylee Matthews, and I'm a fellow with the Young Women Freedom Center. I'm twenty years old, and I'm a formerly incarcerated youth. I'm here on behalf of the whole community, which is every org that you see in here, to demand, I'm sorry, to demand on behalf of the community and myself that we're asking to release these youth that are currently incarcerated, girls and gender expansive youth to be exact. They instead should be diverted into community-based care. Under our guidance, youth have been locked up in a facility that cannot meet basic minimum requirements. While LP continues to operate illegally, declarations should be the main focus of the global plan. Y'all don't have to care, but we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Thomas Bell. I'm with Local Six Eighty-Five. I represent the camps. I'm against the closure of Camp Page because we preach about having small communities. How are we gonna have a small community if we close the camp that deals with older minors, older juvenile youth, and throw them into other camps, making their larger? We don't have a small community then. We have a larger community, and it is not gonna work. Right now, camps are working. You do that, camps won't work. I'm against what Kilpatrick, Kilpatrick is working. It's one of our best camps because of the officers that work there, putting their heart and dedication into it. I'm very much against messing that up right now. With something that's worked, for some reason, probation wants to go and change it and mess it up. We need to keep that in order and intact. We need to keep Camp Page open. I am for changing LP, for they need, we can't be living in nineteen fifty-seven. LP is old and it needs changes, so I do agree with that as well.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jazara Holiday from Youth Justice Coalition, formerly incarcerated youth. Good morning, good afternoon, board of supervisors. Y'all been having me waiting all day. Today, we are here to say it's not enough. As usual, probation has come up with a plan that benefits them in their image while you guys are destroying these youth lives. While Los Pedrinos continues to operate illegally, decarceration should be the main focus of this global plan. The burden of proof should be on probation to justify continued incarceration, not on defenders and advocates to justify release. Probation, along with community stakeholders, must hold intensive case reviews for each young person currently incarcerated at Los Pedrinos. Public defenders, credible messengers, and programs such as D.Y.D. should be involved in service connection prior to release and throughout reentry. Moving youth has been disastrous in the past and traumatizing to youth. We have already seen this tactic fail. Any positive education programming, essential mental health services, and related medication delivery could be severely dysregulated. Young people receiving treatment. This move will force youth...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, board of supervisors. Good to see y'all today. Um, probation must justify youth incarceration at Los Pedrinos. My name is Jacob Jackson, and I am here to urge you to prioritize decarceration. Probation should be required to justify the continued incarceration of every young person at Los Pedrinos, rather than placing the burden on defenders and advocates to argue for the release. The number of young people still held in juvenile halls is alarming. Probation has shown little care for their well-being and continues to operate these facilities illegally, remaining out of compliance with regulations. Youth who ha, youth who should have been released long ago are still detained. Some were even at risk of harm, such as those who have been caught in the recent, such as those who could have been caught in the recent fires. Last time young people were moved overnight, no one was notified, even though probation and inspection were scheduled for the following day. This, this is just another example of how they attempt to cover up their failures instead of addressing them. To ensure accountability, probation, along with community stakeholders, must conduct intensive case reviews for every young person currently incarcerated.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Marquise Nunez. I'm a part of Anti-Racism Coalition. And, um, I was fifteen years old, looking at seventy-two years to life, um, in, in jail as an adult, as a juvenile, being charged as an adult. And, um, I oppose thirty-four, and I oppose thirty-five. Um, I, I, I've been out five years now, and, and I also work in Berry J juvenile halls. I go back, um, and, you know, um, I'm a mentor there. And, um, so like, I'm hands-on there, like Christmas time. Like, these kids have hope when they hear that they want to go back to juvenile halls, when they, when they, when they hear that they got a chance to go to camp. So, you know, um, I'm very hands-on. So, um, I see them every week. So, like, I know that this is something that they wouldn't want, and I just want you guys to, we can come together and, um, you know, we got a bright future ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Hines. I work for Youth Justice Coalition as the Youth Development Coordinator. I have been in the field of youth development for over eight years, and I am here to tell you that probation isn't getting it. I've worked for organizations that are cutting the recidivism rates down drastically by being consistent with youth, by giving them the care that they need, meeting their basic needs, and helping them to become healthy members of society, making them feel like their voice is heard, so that they are able to make the next stage, next changes in, in life. I've seen community come together and have multidisciplinary teams with people that are experts in their lanes to help with one youth at a time, while having caseloads of over a hundred kids on it and still making an impact. And this is with less of a budget than probation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Dr. Truth Bay, Minister of Justice for the Party for Self-Defense. We don't give a damn about these kids. You know that. The county doesn't do oversight. They don't do outreach and engagement. We brought in a fourteen-year-old, Jomon Brown. I want to put Angel's Flight on this path. Angel's Flight, we brought him to Angel's Flight last week, and then they said that he can't have communication with positive role models. We bought him a Bible. They threw it in the garbage. He ran away. This is Angel's Flight on Alvarado. That's U fund county. So when we talk about a global plan for probation, you know there is not one. All they need is state-of-the-art studios, as I said, like these churches, and I need the power to the people to hear. It's not the government that's going to make a change for our youth. Put investment in the children, those who are paying thousand-dollar Beyonce tickets. Let's invest in these youth by creating studios so they can get off the street, so they won't have to be probation-led for the...
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no more in-person speakers to address the board.